Right now.
They told me they didn't want to do it.
I've had, I've had meetings in my office with, with Dr. Starett and they are willing to come back on board, but in a limited capacity for the county. So, to a certain degree, it is, I'll admit, broken, but we are trying to make arrangements to get it fixed.
Think we need commissioner to get involved in solving the problem and then refund it if they get back.
Yeah. One thing I, and I think many of us in the room have recently heard that Tepi Newt County is looking to upgrade their animal control because Crystal Creek, those folks are retiring. And so, Tepi Newt County though, and it's a good idea in my opinion, is also reaching out to the towns and municipalities and cities. West Lafayette, City of Lafayette, they're all coming on board together to develop a shelter for animals in southern part of Lafayette. So I think it's a good idea. I wanted to revisit that with the commissioners that, you know, maybe we need to get the town of Florida, the city of Delphi, town of Camden, and all, all the towns and the city onboard with the program and develop that rather than county strictly being involved. Let's get everybody onboard.
And the town sheriffs?
Yes, yes.
The municipalities, the town sheriffs.
Yeah, yeah.
And that was kind of my main point. I didn't want to assume what I'm hearing around the community is that, why should we pick up a dog? We have nowhere to take it. So if you have nowhere to take it, why do you need a vehicle to pick up an animal? But that's all assumption and that's all, it's just hearsay in the community. So that's, that's where I was going.
No, we are picking up dogs.
We're, we're picking them up again. Like I said, you know, special deputy Graper is, is kind of, I guess you could say, in my book, thinking outside of the box and trying to get these animals moved on to whether it be adoption or foster care even. I know she's got some individuals in the county that take animals in and take care of them until she can establish something for them.
And some of the Durangos, did some of the deputies are driving?
Yes, Durangos and then there would be one. I'm actually looking at, we would have one in that transition, one Dodge Ram pickup truck and transitioning that vehicle into animal control with, you know, put a topper on it and that kind of thing, yeah.
That's this summer, July-ish?
We're being told our newer fleet vehicles should be late July, August. So, yeah.
Sounds like your honor, Toby.
Thank you.
You probably be able to trade in that other one?
It's out for $500.
At least 25.
Yeah.
Thank you, Toby. Okay, that brings us to the review.
I don't think we voted, did we?
Yeah.
We've not.
So, so we've got a motion and a second. Motion by Paul, second by Tracy. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries six to zero. Okay, that now brings us down to the financial report.
We gotta approve the others in here.
What?
We get two, we get five?
This was for the top three we did.
Yeah, we voted on.
Yeah, they took, it sounded them that obviously were all approved at once.
And the agenda? That's where I, yeah, the agenda, was it?
Yeah.
Oh, the minutes?
Yeah, all the consent.
There you go. Good point. Thank you. Thought we had to vote. I like both.
No error on the side.
Okay. Financial reports for April, it should be about 33% going down through a lot of the departments. Everyone is fairly close to 33%. All-star with mine commissioners are 43%. Once again, carry over from January when we move the, the health guys over to council at 27. Prosecutor at 31, court prosecutor at 32. EMS is at 33. I don't have anything other than that to report from my departments. Ken?
Yeah. So EMA is at 26.89% utilized year-to-date. No concerns there. I've had some conversations with Mike here recently and don't have anything to raise to the council. Local road and street, no concerns. Highway, motor vehicle, Fund 1176 is at 27.16% year-to-date, no concerns. Cume Ridge at 28.95% year-to-date. Supplemental adult probation is at 40.73% year-to-date. Couple things, the home detention provider. Beth, do you know, is that, is that contracted? Is that?
Detention?
Provide, it, yeah, provider. At $4,200 for the year, $42.95 I believe, we've utilized 100% of that. So it looked to me like, I guess I just don't understand.
She was transferred over to the treasury.
Okay. So maybe we moved that money over and zeroed out that line?
Which one is it? I'm not sure. I mean, I don't want to state something that.
That's fine. I'll do a little research on that. The other thing that I've been bringing up fairly regular is the second deputy probation officer running high at 69.04% year-to-date. So, something that I'll keep an eye on. Otherwise supplemental juvenile probation, no concerns there either. That's all, thank you.
Okay. I have, our plan run at 35%. The health is running at 18%. They're low because they don't have, you know, police killed. 911 is still running high and that is just because of some invoices and that that are coming in late from last year. Sheriff's at 26%, the jail is at 33, animal patrol is at 12%, and the treasures run at 33. So I think they're pretty good except 911. It was pretty nice for that one.
Doc, I, whatever I think. The clerk is 34, in good shape. Transfer station's only at 24%. That's good. Coroner's looking fine, the veteran, the, you know, so the one is 32%. Matters in good shape.
Auditor and assessor looking really strong. Feeling good about it.
I emailed the reports out on May the 10th, I believe it was. Do we have any questions, Alan? I will bring up that the surtax wasn't a negative, that that was corrected this month. It's just a wrong slide. Anything, tell me. Next, I have the appointment for the local alcohol beverage board. Louis Mansett passed away last year and he just had not, involved in activity in the health department. We did have Joyce Shoder replaced, she passed away, and we have to have your council rep. And Randy Myers is the one who said that he would like to take, I take that back, Joyce Shoder was your rep. But he knows what Joyce did and he would like to take a spot on there. So we have one more spot for the council. That means every Thursday, third Thursday of the month at noon. And Randy is part-time. Randy has his own hours more or less. And who would be able to do that? I've checked it out with the ABC. The Excise Police, they said it would be fine for him to take that over. It's up to you.
I'm going to appoint Randy Myers.
We have a motion and a second. We appoint Randy Myers to the alcohol beverage commission. Any further discussion? On behalf of the council, as a council rep. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
For those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Aye, excellent. No doubt, yes.
And there's one for you to sign to, so. And next is the Carroll County Redevelopment Commission, the allocation areas. We have received letters for the council to know that there are no excess values overlapping taxing units for the Carroll Consolidated Allocation Area, South Burlington Residential Housing Area, the East Forum, Ringer's Residential Housing Area. And actually you just need to know that you have the Mahoney's and the Minnis. So I brought those four. The other one is from, I bet Carroll County Redevelopment, because it came on Redevelopment's letter, is from the city of Delphi Redevelopment Commission from Joe Manfield saying that the same thing, but different allocation for the city.
So this one should just really say Delphi and the side town?
Well, this is why. So, one minute's though, I'm gonna actually put what the areas are, so. There is something that's up there, I guess. I don't know why you use that. But anyway, it's just you guys to acknowledge that you receive them and I agree with them. So if you're essentially acknowledging.
I know. Do we have to each acknowledge?
Acknowledge.
The council acknowledged, I got it.
Okay. The president, seven players.
Okay. That is all that I have.
It's down to Indiana Packers abatement.
Now I have paperwork for that. It was filed in the assessors office and then given to me. I emailed it to all of you. And then I don't know whether Jake wanted to say anything. Sometimes EDC says something, I don't know.
I would appreciate, if you would, please.
I had a conversation with Russ Yerwood and Nabu Pagasi, which is president and CEO. They, they're in compliance with their commitments to be original data from taking expansion. They're asking for a moving value reduction. That was the schedule that was approved then. So they're still trying to find employees, the right about 2,000 employees on the bottom. Actually a little bit under what they're expected, what they were, I guess, estimating.
Oh, all.
That's one thing.
Okay.
We're all to meet.
Evening reading.
I'm going to approve the abatement for Indiana Packers.
We have a motion on the floor to approve Indiana Packers' abatement. Second. Any further discussion on the council?
What, Beth, can I ask you a question?
Certainly.
What are our options as a council? Approve, deny? Can we counter? Are there other bargaining tools that we have available to sort this out? Or is this documented to where we can only approve the abatement or not?
Well, I think you just, well, I'll refer to Eric on this, but like my impression is that they, we've already, a previous council entered into this agreement. Our only tool is whether or not they're complying with that agreement.
The agreement term is 10 years?
That'd be the math. What that's sorry.
So Jake, you're, you're saying, and I'm sorry, I'm trying to scroll through this paperwork I, I did prior to the meeting.
What year are we in?
So this would be the seventh year, I think, sixth year. It was approved in 16, I don't want to say, I don't know if it was approved in 16. CF1 has the actual deduction and what their estimates were for the abatement. So they told us that they were going to make an investment of X.
Their payroll was like way over.
And so, yes, that was correct. So the actual benefit for the deduction for income tax, the two different buckets.
Yeah, actual start made 2001 to 2016. If they exceeded it.
On the payroll side, it didn't hit the employee numbers necessarily and that's a struggle for everyone and we discussed that with them. It's not that the positions aren't open and available for hire by any stretch. So, so yeah, they, they are, the 91 positions are available and they've gotten, they've fluctuated into that expansion. But yeah, their wages are far exceeded the expectations of the abatement. If they could find a lot to fill the 91 additional, then they would be at that as well, so. And they're asking for, with the $2 million in AB deduction off the real property.
So they would acquire more than 91, I mean, many of the positions.
And it's conjecture, but they would hire 400 more if they had them. So it's, it's a matter of volume at this point.
Heard there's a shortage of hauls and that they're not working that many hours right now. But that's interesting.
Yeah, they're indication to us, and we met with them last week, both Russ and Nabu, the president, C, or their CEO, and the really infrastructure side thing is the rate and rate step as well. So if they're able to get a floor to place water out of the plant, they could increase operations and make more food and then probably look at another expansion once that's done. So I think we're eyeballing the next 10 years with the EMHivers and what it looks like. We've had that discussion, like where are they going to have? They've indicated that they're, they're in hypergrowth mode over the last five years and will be for the next five. And that there might be a potential for, and I say might be likely, that, that they would want to do some more expanding on the operations. So I think they're in a good place financially.
Okay. Motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries six to zero. And brings us down to health department, new job description for administrator. Doc, if you want to present that, I know you did. I can, yeah. To the commissioners or anyone from the audience, just you, I said, I said, anyone from the audience to present that, just yourself. I think I, I told Dr. Becker I would. She wasn't here. She's graciously helping us. She's our health officer, her and Bay, but she's got to keep going. Doing a great job. Okay, what we're proposing, and I took it to the council, to the commissioners and they approved it on Monday. We had a county board of health, we, last week, approved it, that we are proposing to have a health administrator rather than a bio record. And if that sounds wide, it's called to Mr. Irwin's office and everything, who's asking for approval for this. We are looking at, I don't think we need a full-time nurse, we're gonna have part-time nurse, a couple things will be, and so forth. This is not a, this health administrator, while it's gonna be an increase in sewing, looking at center like to grants for the health department and so forth. And we're initially gonna have, has a requirement of bachelor's degrees, so it's gonna cost a little more, but we're saving money on the nursing area to, it'll be much more efficient operation. So I guess, what I'm saying, the health department's asking the council to approve a new position of a health administrator.
Did they have an hourly rate?
That happened. The scavenge.
How can we bring about an hourly rate?
I.
What position?
The commissioners approved a new position. I thought he was going to ask for the first, to be first deputy.
First deputy. That's all, that's all Gavin wanted. First deputy, but the first deputy is making.
Is what I was told, right? They were wanting to start at that, because they're not sure that they can get one for that.
The question was, if we don't have a rate, how do we approve?
Motion to approve that the first deputy rate paid.
I think we can just, I can't hear. I'm telling you how it works.
Well, you know.
Don't, don't we have to? First job description. I think we have to.
We have to have a rate for the job description, don't we?
We never have a rate.
Teach you the rate of the first deputy. I know the rate of first deputy. I just asked him.
We're asking for that.
My initial question was, are you asked, I mean, you have to, what are you gonna pay this person or are you just gonna advertise and administrate it without a wage right now?
What's, what is the first deputy rate?
Really?
This is example, position.
Thirty-five, five, ninety-four. Thirty-five, five, ninety-four.
Motion to approve that first deputy rate of thirty-five, five, ninety-four.
My initial question is, is about what they're asking for?
That's what he said.
That after I said, I thought people wanted to ask for that. He said, it has not been determined yet.
Which is it, Doc?
First.
I think she helped him with that. At the county board health meeting, we weren't sure what it takes to get somebody. We were asking for a position. I, I see where you're going with it.
But didn't you guys decide to start at the first deputy rate?
Yes, Ben. That is correct. That's my motion.
Just trying to help.
Doc, did you make a vote? Yes, I did.
I'm taking the vote.
What's the motion on the floor?
To, to approve the position at the first deputy rate at thirty-five thousand, five, ninety-four, paid.
Well, I mean, it's a problem. There has to be an amendment to the salary ordinance, that's one motion. There has to be an improvement, approval of this job description, two, two separate issues.
Do you have your, just my?
You second, you second.
Doc, did you second it? Oh, he can't vote. Okay, we have the motion on the floor. Is there a second? We gotta get the health department moving. That's the way we.
Where?
That motion, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Where are we at with merging here with Cass County? Is that, is that not happening? Is that still in the works?
No, they, Cass County declined to do that, to, to merge. They were looking at another possibility, but I don't believe that has gone to fruition, so.
Okay.
The doctor was, just called both down deal and that, my understanding, there was one of the best.
And I'd just like to make note, the health department is my department and I have reached out two or three times to them, but I think kind of because Doc sits on their board, that they, they relay the word through him, because I have not been contacted about anything that has been going on to the health department. So it's not that I'm not doing my due diligence and wanting to help. I just have not been contacted. So I don't know what's going on.
Dr. Becker.
I just don't want people to think that I'm not working on it.
Well, I agree with, I'm, I'm sorry, I agree with Doc when you did help, the health department get going. This is a fundamental change to operations.
Yes.
This role is, is completely different. It has supervisory, it has like, we're, we're changing pay, like I, I don't want to hang this up on bureaucracy, but like, I, I don't, I mean, it's just, doesn't seem like this seems buttoned up.
I emailed Dr. Becker and told her that, you know, we needed to be included somewhat for, you know, because you gotta have a wage and, you know, that there was, if they were gonna do different.
I don't think that's the problem though. But first clerk was the bio records. It's the lowest paying job and so is my first clerk. Sharon has a first clerk and a prosecutor has one. We are having, I am having a hard time getting somebody to apply for my job. They did too. That's why they thought they might enhance that job description to get them to do more work in there and not step on everybody's toes. Schedule shots and do something for each one of them that's in there. Like, I mean, grants that they've already done the grants before, before the last employee in there. But I think she did help out in there with the grants. They don't know where to start. They wanted to start a lot more than that and I think they came down to say that, you know, they wanted to start at a first deputy's pay to see if they could get somebody to do this job.
And I'm in total agreement with that. I knew it was gonna be more responsibility, once again, from the hearsay that I was here and that it was going to be a, if you're gonna get someone, you're going to have to pay them more to do that kind of responsibility. And I'm in total agreement with that, but like Josh said, it really needs to be looked at and compared to other positions and, I mean, I mean, isn't that kind of what you're saying? Is that?
Yeah, I mean, I hate getting hung up in bureaucracy, but I mean, like, this is like, even if we approve all this and they can't find somebody, then they gotta come back and it's like, we've approved the job description and we can't fill it because of the pay. Now they're gonna want more pay and now they, they say we can't fill it for less than 70,000. Well, we don't have enough tax rate to, to do that. So I mean, it's just, I mean, it's a larger conversation.
Wouldn't you, wouldn't you start somewhere, just get something done, thirty-five thousand, five, ninety-four, and then if we can't fill it at that, then we'll address that in the next meeting? Isn't that how you do things? You know, you start somewhere and you go forward? That's how I do it. We gotta get it started.
I, I mean, I'm, I'm for that. I just wanted to know what rate they wanted because it wasn't presented to us. So if that's the rate they have focused on or discussing that they want, then I'm, I'm, yes, we need to do something.
Will I second the motion?
Doc, there's no motion on the floor. I think he made a motion and Doc seconded it. Well, there was a, there was a question about that that Beth just raised and there's no conflict.
He's abstaining, okay. I thought he was abstaining.
He may have abstained in the past, but it's not a paid position, correct. Doc, the position on the health board is not paid.
Oh, yeah, we get twenty-five dollars every quarter. We need to do it.
Three, really?
It is per meeting, and their meetings are four, so.
Understood. Then I, then I agree, as odd as it sounds, I agree, that, that you should abstain. Even if it's what I. That's eight dollars and thirty-three cents a month.
I'd be glad, any, any other questions we have, as discussion of, uh, more to help. Like that's, we thought we, initial request was hire. We came down to first deputy, we're starting to see we can hire.
Also, and that's not going, and that's going to be eliminated, right, the first clerk?
Yes, yes, she, right, that's, that's going to be eliminated, and.
Let's start, we're going to start.
Is there any might take lead?
The motion on the floor is to.
Motion on the floor is dying, let me second.
Well, there's still a motion, if you.
Well, I just wanted to clarify that, motion on the floor for the new job description at a first deputy rate of thirty-five thousand five hundred ninety-four, is there a second? No second, motion died for lack of.
I would like to make a motion that we approve the job description for the Health Department administrator.
Second. Okay, a motion to approve the job description for Health Department administrator, motion on jobs through, second, I'm in lack of, any further discussion?
So you're not attaching a range to that, you're just?
Be the second.
Just, just approving.
Just approving the job.
The job description, yes. Any further discussion, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Oh, Doc abstaining?
Yes.
I would, I move that we establish in salary ordinance a role in within the Health Department of administrat, uh.
Administrator of the Health Department.
Administrator of Health Department, administrator, the, so within the Health Department, the role of administrator at the pay scale of the first deputies, and I also, had my motion to delete the role of vital records.
Second. Motion on the floor, and a second, to approve, pay for Health, Health Department administrator, first deputy pay, and then delete the vital records rule.
I think you put salary ordinance in there, because you have to.
Yeah.
Yes, salary. Okay, is there any discussion concerning the motion on the floor? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, abstaining, once again, motion carries five to zero. That brings us down to new additional. Two, one out of American Rescue, is that part of consent?
Uh, it was not, nevermind.
And one out of County General, are we still trying to decide, and how about all of those?
You and I decided to advertise them both, because they were trying to have us, and, but I talked to Jackie, and she said she cannot American Rescue, I agree, I, this is not broadband, has nothing to do with broadband, that is a separate contract, which is coming out of County General, so, uh, we just need to do one or the other here. And that is for the UMS ambulance, and. I sent that to you, your two, the two quotes that you had.
Doc, can you just help me out, my, my computer's not working.
This is just advertising.
No, these are advertised.
They're advertised, yes.
What the other question? I, I, I'm sorry, I'm, you're trying to get, so you're buying.
Yeah, so the, the ambulance is actually our backup ambulance, which is the van, one of the whole van chassis for two thousand fourteen, and that is just to, um, do a remount, so what they do is you take the box off, get back a new chassis, and then you can set the box back on.
And that's, is that north central?
That's north central.
So that's twenty-three thousand dollars?
No, that's, that's.
Ninety-one.
Six, six, five, what?
So, so, so is this, so that, you have, you just got one?
Yes.
This year, we have, one we got.
Two, two, two or three years ago.
Three years, probably. Yeah, which, so you now have two, is this replacing the one that you would have replaced next?
No, we, we, so we'll still be on track to get one in twenty twenty-four, that's new one. So what we have right now is we have the one truck up north, it's a two thousand twelve, has a hundred and seventy thousand miles on it, our backup truck is a two thousand fourteen, has a hundred and sixty-five foot on it, I didn't have it. So what we're doing is replacing that backup truck, and then what we'll do is we get a new one in twenty-four, um, we'll have all three primary trucks will be four-wheel drives, our backup truck will be standard six-wheel drive three, like, thingy chassis, to fill in for when we have a truck that's down.
So what's going down in your next, what are you getting rid of on your next one?
The next one, will we get rid of, um, the one that's up.
That's the twenty-twelve?
That's the twenty-twelve, yep, I, I printed this out, I don't know if this will help you guys, this just banked the shows, vehicle replacement wise, what we're looking at for the next. So the twenty twenty-three, we'd remount the, the, the one we have now, a new chassis, and then twenty twenty-four, we would get another four-wheel drive, so we have all three four-wheel drives as our primary, we, the one we just remounted will be our backup truck, we can fill in, and again, when a truck breaks down and whatever, and then twenty twenty-seven, we would start remounting the boxes, the four-wheel drive chassis. My plan is to remount them each one time, and then the second time, we get the first.
So this just may be my ignorance, but I thought from our conversations before, like, what went bad was the boxes started hitting like gremlins and electrical.
Well, you can, our, you can, but our boxes are pretty solid, so the, the mechanical stuff now will be, if the chassis exists, the chassis will already be replaced, can do the transition. You can get gremlins in there that are like a issue, we've been fortunate that the one we remounted, we have had no issues with the backup whatsoever, it's outside wise, a lot of times you'll be at, on the boxes, you'll start with, getting that, the aluminum will start corroding, um, this one has very, very minimal, as I would compare to the one with Greg, Greg's got quite a bit.
And so, okay, I understand, um, the, the other, the striker component is the lifting, that's the, and so how many of them is it, for all of them?
That's the ones we each got, yep. And I think I downloaded the video, showed you guys what, if you guys seen that, what it, Doc's in the video.
Yeah, you know, you can show them.
So that's, that's the other step, if you look back when I submitted it, and when we do our plan, ten years, three, four years, five years ago, those, those auto loads are included in that ten-year plan, um, along with the new bill, we consider to, to, we might have gotten, um, so that's, that's the other portion of the, the main, or the automatic pots that we got, so we got the automatic pots a few years ago, so they raise up and down, so you'll have to actually do this this way, this device, again, goes in the back, you push the pot up, so right now, when you put the wheels in the back of the ambulance, you still have to manually hold all that weight, and then push, push it in, and that's where, you know, that's again, anytime you're pushing or pulling, twisting, that's when you get that, so these devices come out, so when you push it in, put the button, the wheels come up, you don't, you, one hand, you can hold on to it, and then if it's like a trailer, you slide it in.
What's the, like, expectancy of the?
Um, there's, they're relatively new, the last five to six, seven years, or around here, people get them around here, um, I didn't specifically ask that question, but you know, it's, I'm going to say our pots, we can get,
Would it be possible to, like, just update two of them, or a certain amount of them, and then as the new ones come in, they're already, and they have the equipment that you are wanting, or are we?
Right now.
Do we really need the necessity to do all of the equipment, and then?
I would say, I, if, if you're, if you're one, they're not doing all four of them, I would say we'd have to do three, so all the primary trucks have one, that would be my suggestion, if you then want to put one in the backup truck, we could get by with that, um, but again, if it's, if it's in, if it's in service for any period of time, it's, they're going to go back to, that's what I'm suggesting, so. But yes, we could just do three, if, if that's what you guys wish, wish.
Or two.
Or you could do two, but, yeah, but if you do one, then we're.
Because we, I mean, we've been doing okay so far.
We have, yeah, and you're right, but it is, the back injuries, and I, and I have back problems myself, but in this thirty years, and that's the one thing that's going bad on me is my back, so it, it ruins people, and you can ask anybody that lifts, Indiana has back issues are the biggest of them. And the other thing is, is staff retention, if we don't advance to some of this stuff like this, this, like, everybody else around is, you know, Coca-Cola has them, Tees has them, um, also Firehouse, and, so people are going to say, well, I can go over here and, do this, right, and turn it up, and we won't have to name them still, so, that's just another.
How long, theoretically, we should last about something to the time that we do a, a box mount and cannae remount, it should be proximate with that. Right, that's where I was going with it.
And I don't, and I don't know, I mean, I, I'm not a hundred percent sure on that, but as long as we maintain them, and.
You can retire by that anyways.
I'll be done with that, somebody else.
How long do you think it will be before these are a requirement?
It's, I don't know, um, Indiana's kind of the, one of the smaller ones about making the requirements, but in some places, they're already starting to pop up, where they have to, like, seatbelts, used to seatbelts were not a, you had seatbelts, it went across here, but now you can look in the back, they have harnesses, that people put over their shoulders, and, and those are slowly becoming mandatory as well.
So how long will this, this backup ambulance last?
Well, that backup, if we remount it, it should last a long time, I mean, I don't know, it's going to last a long, but it'll be a brand-new truck, it'll get used up there for a year until you get a, a new one, but then, you know, it'll have one thousand miles on it, I think.
Oh, so you're putting this immediately in service?
As soon as it gets done, but it won't get done again until sometime next year. But right now.
But next year, we get a new one.
Twenty-four, uh, twenty-four, we get a new, but that's, that's the other thing, is it's about two years, when you order an ambulance, it's about two years, right now.
That's kind of my question, is like, you know, why update them now, when we're going to turn in in a couple of years, and you order one that are in it?
That's the answer.
Yeah.
And Striker, she did tell me that there, there's going to be a cost increase, if you're, if you're going to go, oh. And the two, we have two ambulances right now that are, they could go in right now, because you have to have a rail system on the floor, to actually put them in, so they would go in right now to be installed, the backup truck that we get remounted in that quote is putting a rail system in that floor, so when we get it back next year sometime, it would be ready to go. And then the new one in twenty twenty-four will automatically, that'll be in as well, so when we get it in twenty twenty-four, it will be ready to go, so.
So I guess my, my overarching concern is, like, when we're spending dollars, we're trying to, what, what gives the, the residents the best benefit?